I'd like to call the keynote order, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It's on the plate. The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, your terms are settled?
Yes.
Plead agenda.
Move to approve the August fourteen agenda.
Second, all in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and the August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Thirty, all in favor?
Okay, town administration, clear update?
All right, just a couple items. I did have a conference call with Cardi Graphics today regarding the cemeteries, John. And if we give them, if we give the cemetery committee an eleven-by-fourteen set of maps, and they go through with a red pen and mark where the cemeteries are, they will let no charge create a layer for us to be able to put on top. The only way that there would be a charge is if you didn't want to wait until the annual maintenance. So they update the maps twice a year for us now. The next one isn't due to be done until next April. But if you did decide to do it immediately, and we're talking about maybe three to five hundred dollars. So for the first step is to have the committee take the set of maps, just X marked spot, write the name of the cemetery, and then we'll scan, email that over to Cardi Graphics, and they'll be able to get that layer done for you guys. Next is to just let you know that main municipal did send us a check today, a dividend check for four thousand and seventy dollars. This was because of our good performance and lost prevention efforts in workers' comp. So we will get that deposited. Last is just to notify you that one of the members of the Conservation Forest Committee that was elected at town meeting, Sherry Maness, has decided not to continue in that role. So that position is open and being advertised. So I'll have time.
Okay, thank you. Will you use all up here?
Okay, warrant finance committee still is waiting to begin. I think there'll be some time before that happens. Nothing new with Eka other than we appointed the director last week, and he's off in the morning. With regard to municipal finance, we had a meeting yesterday with folks from O'Donnell, our outside accountant, Mark Roy, Jennifer, Lauren, and John were there. I just want to thank Jennifer and Lauren for the work they did in preparing for that meeting, of course coordinating with Mark. But within an hour, we had gone through everything, come to a conclusion about what we wanted to present tonight. So thanks for your effort, Jennifer. So we're going to talk, that's an agenda out a little later on. We're going to provide some material similar to what you saw at town meeting about what we're going to propose for tax rates. And we'll make some adjustments to what's going to be presented, but hopefully tonight we'll set a tax rate.
Ed? Transfer station, the new hire up there, the part-time hire, is working out well. He's been working, I think, pretty much every day right now where they're open, just to get used to the place and see what's what. They all seem, they all like him up there, and he's doing a, doing a good job, and he likes it.
Nice.
Nothing on Mary Grant, nothing on animal control?
Dan?
For fire department, we're going to have a little bit of discussion about some things that came up with, the discussion with Chief Hamm. For the recreation committee, we are going to be putting out a job description with the job posting. And we are still looking for people interested in joining the recreation committee. And did you want to do the update?
Yeah, so for right now, as of today, we have sixty-eight kids signed up for soccer. We're still going to accept those, you know, registrations until we just can't do it anymore. And we have coaches in place for all the grades. But if anyone would like to step up, we could use another three K, K, three, four, and I've just kind of found out tonight, we could use another five-six coach. So I will be making some inroads as soon as I can to try to fill the five-six position then, just kind of fell through.
Happy to look at the list of kids that are on there and help you pressure on, I mean, encourage someone to go. Love to see the list.
If anyone's interested, you can reach out to Jennifer, myself, or John, and coaching as well. And then for the Conservation Forest Committee, I heard about Sherry not being appointed. I did send her a thank you email for all the hard work. She was very crucial in getting the work that was presented at last week's meeting by the chair into motion. And we also had a workshop yesterday where we went to a town property, Hibo Haibo. My car barely survived. It was very interesting.
You drove up in it?
You're supposed to walk in.
Partially. Well, I thought we were walking, but I didn't realize how far back it was. So we drove until I got to the point where my get-by keep going, I'm not going to have a car anymore. And I got in with somebody.
You drove your car, what would that help?
There's this part where they, they have all those new rock put down. I got to it right there, and I backed up to the green spot. So but I never been up there. It was very interesting to see, I'm interested to see what the rest of the community has hopefully to have report. And the idea of doing these workshops is for members to get an idea of the properties that the town has, which is the second one that we've done, and to make recommendations, think about what the town may want to do or what they can do with the properties that we have. So I think for me is very informative, and I think for the committee members is very informative. About all I have.
Good, great. John?
Well, right now, I've got nothing on, nothing on cemetery. But we are going to actively be looking for another member to join the board. I was on bed out today. School, still nothing going on with them. And planning board has a meeting tomorrow. Unfortunately, I will be out of town for that. And that's pretty much all I have.
Did you mention during your presentation, there was something about sign-ups for the league cheerleader?
We haven't done that far yet. We are, we're working with.
The coach.
With Coach Nicole.
Okay, I know, it was a two-week.
Yeah, so.
Throw that out there.
Yeah, so I got a text from somebody the other day asking if we were going to be offering comp cheer again this year. And if we were, we need to get sign-ups going right now. So I hope reached out to Nicole today. I don't know if she's heard back from her or not, to see what kind of timeline she can do, and I'll be able to get this woman to sign.
Okay.
I just, I remember you mentioned it.
So I just want to quote it out there. Okay. Guess it's me, right? Okay, roads, for the committee, I don't have anything at this time. Municipal grounds, I do have to get a hold of the tenants there this week. They have started out here on the memorial. And other than that, I don't think we have any, have any updates on any groundwork.
Yeah, no, we're waiting. They, they just sent us a bill for their proposal they're putting together. So we know they're working on it.
Talking about for the survey?
No, for, we did, we authorized the survey. I have to sign it. We said we'd get started on that right away. No, the design company.
Yeah, the grounds.
We authorized.
Oh, yeah, 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 yep, yep. Okay, cool. Okay, I guess we're going to go to department head, committee chair meets. Okay, C nine, old business law enforcement services.
Ed? Sure. We, today, John and I went down and met with Chief Yaraskovich in Rollinsford. Had a, probably a couple hours. It's someone I know and a couple people talking to gave us. So back up a little bit, Rollinsford's population is just about three thousand people. Roadwise, they've only got seven miles of town road, where we have fifty-something.
There's still patrol state roads, right?
They do, they do. So town-wise, it's very similar to us. So I thought it would be a good town to talk to as far as, you know, what it takes to put a police department together. They've got a department right now of three full-time officers. They, they have two that are going through the hiring process, so there'll be up to five. That's a total of, so it's two, two, was it sergeant?
They have lieutenant?
Lieutenant, a sergeant, a chief, and two patrol. Everybody does everything down there. So it's not like they're just patrolling. So they all, they all patrol, they all do it, all including the chief. So, but we had a good chat with them, pretty eye-opening as to what it takes. We've got some, we've got some more growing to do, mostly dog wise, to be able to do it. It's not, it's not a cheap endeavor. Depends on what we want to do. Only John, John took some pretty good notes. I'll let him take it from there.
Yeah, you know, chief was really good. He gave us a lot of time and, you know, he just told us things that, you know, you wouldn't think of unless you were in law enforcement. You know, what you need in the building as far as booking rooms and holding cells and rooms for records and, you know, that you need to qualify your shooters every year, and you need a shooting instructor to do that with. You know, just the, the startup cost, you know, I was afraid of the car, the car, his cruiser's above forty-eight grand, but it's another fifteen outfitted.
Was it forty-eight grand for the car?
That's what it was down there, for the explorer. I think, I think we're closer to doing what we have up here from the sheriff's department for a car. What was he, fifty-eight or something like that? So, yeah, I mean, that's what a car's going to cost you, you know, a new one, fully outfitted. So.
We're still going to, you know, meet with other towns.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I think the next, the next step I think we should do, because we've got quite a few options, we own half the sheriff right now, so maybe the thinking is just to find out what's it going to cost to get whole sheriff from the sheriff's department? You know, as opposed to going with our own police department?
I think we're looking long-term though.
Yeah.
I think the problem we're having with the, the deal we have right now is the unknown.
Right.
I mean, last year when we were, we were doing this.
They were right down with the wire.
Well, they weren't sure if they were going to give us one.
Yeah.
And the problem.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, and remember, you remember, they took one away from us for quite a while.
Yeah.
Then they couldn't replace them, then we filed it three or four months later.
Right.
And so I think what we're looking at here is, you know, yeah, you know, we can look at pricing out a full-timer, whatever, you know, a forty-hour, that's not a full-timer.
Yeah.
How many hours in there a week?
Yeah, plenty.
A lot, you know? So, so, but I think what we're looking at is trying to figure out, in the long term, the sheriff's department may not be long-term because they may not be able to provide those services.
Right.
So we're looking how we're going to do, we're not going to go state trooper, but they don't want to do any municipalities anymore. They want to take care of their state roads. So, so that's why I think we have to really look into other options. And we, we all know it's going to cost money, you know what I mean? Fire department costs money, transfers, everything costs money. It's whether or not it's something that's going to be feasible.
So he had just for, you know, the five of them, his budget is seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Yep, yeah, the total budget.
You know, that, that's including, you know, that's including, you know.
Yeah, that's the five.
Or, or buying all those cars, you know, the startup cost.
It, it, it start costs everything.
Right.
You know, I mean, and we, back in the day when we were talking about the town, you had this obsession with having their own highway department, you know? We start throwing little numbers on us, getting the hell out of there.
Yeah, you're way over a million dollars.
Way over that. So, but, you know, that's why I think talking to these towns, just get an idea, I think what we need is an idea of what we need in place to start off.
Yeah.
You know, two or three, I, I still don't think we need three individuals.
You do, you're not going to go over one.
Well, you can't go over two either.
You're going to have, yeah, in two, you don't.
People taking vacation, and this and that.
Yeah.
So.
Three is what you would need to have a startup.
But we get an idea too, how does that trans, you could go from New Hampshire to Maine, is there any differences that, you know?
There's a different rules and regulations that Maine has. I mean, they'd have to go through some sort of an academy, you know, to, to get caught up with the Maine rules if you hired someone from New Hampshire.
Yeah, and they're talking about whether they set it in the bottom or whether or not they're.
No, no, you, you still have the same thing. You've got a car, you've got a, there are things that we didn't even think of. You know, the, the boat grew fast. The cameras, if you want, body cameras if you want, computers in the cruisers, the guns, the rifles, the ammunition, the fuel for the car. I mean, it's, but once again, it's startup costs, and you wouldn't necessarily need some of that duplicated. I mean, some you would, but you wouldn't, you know? You could probably do two cruisers and three people. Because then you've got a backup car.
So. The five seems like a large number. How does their crime compare to active?
I think they're pretty much the same.
Really?
What they end up getting is, is the overflow from Somersworth, the overflow from Dover.
Yeah.
Not so much from South Row, but some. So, yeah. And I remember this from working down there on the highway side and being at some of their meetings, the crimes that started in those other towns and in Rollinsford, you know, for some odd reason.
What a high.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm just wondering if acting, you know, by comparison, maybe perhaps there's less crime, but, you know, maybe not.
I think they, no, I don't, I don't think so. I think from hearing our reports.
Yeah.
Law of the chapter.
I say, remember.
Exactly, yeah, but, yeah.
I really think that at the end of the day, if you look at compare, the best comparison, I think, is Wakefield.
Could be, yeah.
I, I imagine everything is the same. They're acting upside down.
They've got a much bigger population.
The population's bigger.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
That doesn't tell. Yeah, but during the summertime, that's where we are.
Yeah.
Seventy-six to seventy-three.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
We should at least see what they have for a force in that building. I mean, they've got that big brand-new building.
Yeah.
At least talk.
Wakefield's another town that I want to, I want to go to and talk to.
If, if we're comparable to Rollinsford in terms of the need for law enforcement.
Yeah.
It shows just how much, how much less we're providing in coverage to what perhaps we ought to be.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not five, but it's not a half either.
Right.
And so there's, there's definitely a need here. The other thing is, I would imagine you could transition this in, so you don't have to take a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar bite in year one. Maybe you build that up over time, so, you know, it's not as big an impact on the tax rate.
Yeah, and that, that equated for five full-timers.
Yeah.
He was using some part-time receives train to get away from that, because trying to keep them qualified was a problem.
And it's too much trouble to get them to come and work.
Yeah.
For hard-time jobs.
Yeah. So, I mean, I thought it quite interesting, a lot more to it than, than what I initially thought, but it's going to be a lot fully scary, but I mean, it's great. Yeah.
Well, yeah, if you take that startup, that would say seven-fifty.
Well, that's, that was the.
That's our budget right now.
Five officers, hundred hours, two, I don't know, you got five guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so you could pare that down, and even the numbers he said he had here could be pared down some. So, you know.
Maybe we get to four hundred or something.
I was thinking.
Yeah, you're probably going to be, yeah, you're probably, you're probably going to be pushing five.
Yeah.
But that's a startup.
Yeah, that's what's set up.
Yeah.
Well, you need a goalie that's secure.
Yeah, some, some of that we'd have to see what, what county would do, or the jail, I should say. We don't necessarily need a holding cell, because I think if you're, if you're arresting somebody, take them right to Alfred.
It's like with the dogs, dog park, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know how that works logistically-wise, but I think that would work because the sheriff's department doesn't have a holding cell all over these towns. So, and they're going to end up down there anyway. So, you know, there's probably some things there.
I appreciate you guys going to do that, Steve.
Yeah, no, it was, it was pretty nice. Yeah, especially when we first walked in the door, and we'll leave that alone.
Oh, yeah.
They had to bring a brass.
They were on TVs.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we're done. Old business, new business, more ordinance update.
So as the select board are aware, their, the town of Acton received a letter from the Department of Inland Fisheries regarding that mooring ordinance that was voted in by the voters of Acton. After review, the town's attorney has put together a statement that we'd like to read and release and post on the website until further notice. So based on advice from the town's attorney, the town of Acton has decided to pause enforcement of the mooring ordinance until we can address some potential conflicts with state law. The ordinance was reviewed with legal counsel prior to the town voting to adopt it. At the time, we believe it was compliant with state law and similar to several other ordinances adopted by municipalities in the state. However, the main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife contacted the town with concerns that certain provisions of the ordinance did not comply with state law. We have also learned that similar letters have been sent to neighboring towns with local mooring ordinances. The town's attorney has continued to research this matter, consulting with main municipal, the main attorney general's office, and inland fisheries and wildlife. The consensus is that if the town is going to regulate moorings at a local level, the town would need to implement a permitting system overseen by the harbor master to allocate moorings to shorefront property owners as well as some non-residents. We have been told that this has been a confusing area of the law for many years, and other towns have had difficulties implementing these types of ordinances. The legislature has also been looking at revising the laws affecting moorings and floating structures. We are looking at possible amendments that would allow the town to accomplish this goal of the ordinance, but at this time, let's temporarily pause the enforcement.
Good. Tax rate.
As you recall, at the town meeting, when we were presenting the budget warrants, we also provided information on what the status was of our reserves and the impact of approving all of the warrants that were presented at that time on the town's tax rate. This is, of course, is the time of year where the select board needs to set the tax rate finally for the coming fiscal year. That would be reflected in the bills you're going to get in September, September?
Yes.
September. So tonight, we're looking to, to review the material around the components of, if we go into that tax rate, and hopefully arrive at a decision as to what the tax rate should be for the coming year. Fortunately, not all of this is visible.
Oh, I said.
Quick to screen.
Yeah.
Bottom right.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay.
Or type the number in where it says one three.
Let's try it on.
Better? Move it over a touch.
You can still, you can.
Turn the computer.
If you do this for a second. I'm glad you're here, Jason. Thank you. Okay. We're good. Magic, man. Okay. What we have here is a, the detail that went into the calculation for the prior year tax rate, along with what's being proposed for the coming year. And by proposed, I mean, these are some numbers that we put together in our meeting yesterday, and the select board needs to react to. You can see that our total revenues increased slightly from two million oh forty-two to two million oh ninety-four. And there's also a forecast here that I just plugged in, and basically, I'm assuming revenues grow by three percent, but you'll understand a little later why that's, why that's relevant. With regard to the expense budget, you'll recall the municipal, municipal expense budget actually went down from twenty-four to twenty-five, about three and a half percent, as I recall. Went from four-point-seven-seven million to four-million-six-four-four. And then you can see what happened to the school expense budget, went from six-point-two to six-point-six, thereabouts. And when you calculate the tax rate, you also put in what's called an overlay. It's basically a contingency. And here, we're using a contingency of two-hundred-thousand dollars. Now. You can see that for, in that first column of numbers, which was, you recall, is twenty-four, we had used five-hundred-thousand of municipal reserves in order to keep the taxes, tax rate lower. We also drew from municipal reserves to cover various capital items of six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand. And the school had used two-hundred-thousand of its reserves. So in total, we were, we were using basically a million and three-fifty of reserves, and that allowed us to get to a six-forty-five tax rate, as the tax rate that was effective last year and reflected in your bill to set it down paid. For the, the coming year, I plugged in an additional five-hundred-thousand use of reserves. The school in its budget and approved at town meeting anticipated, or actually was authorized, to draw four-hundred-thousand from its reserves. So you can see that that takes the net amount to be raised by taxes from seven-million-six-eighty-three to twenty-four to eight-million-five-hundred-thousand in fiscal year twenty-five. The value of town property went up. It now stands at one-point-two billion dollars. Before the evaluation, that number was like six-hundred-million dollars. So there was almost a doubling in the property values from the valuation. What that would do was raise the tax rate from six-forty-five to seven-oh-seven. And you'll notice for the last two columns, I'm sorry, the data's chopped off, that's twenty-six and twenty-seven, I'm assuming that municipal reserves are used to two and a four-hundred-thousand and then another three-hundred-thousand, and that would cause the tax rate to jump to seven-point-nine-one next year, and then to eight-thirty-seven. And as a percentage, the increase this coming year at seven-oh-seven would be an increase in tax rate of nine-point-six percent. And assuming reserve use in twenty-six and twenty-seven is laid out, the tax rate would jump by eleven-point-nine percent, and then begin to level off at five-point-eight. This is the result of, at town meeting, you recall, sort of a consequence of using reserves to keep your taxes, tax rate artificially low. But eventually, you're going to run out of reserves, and when you do, your tax rate's going to spike up, and that's what's going on here. Where we're drawing nine-hundred-thousand reserves for the coming year, and in this analysis, I'm saying maybe four-hundred-thousand dollars next year. So five-hundred-thousand less in reserve use, which is causing that large increase. At some point, that's going to become true. I don't believe we can continue now that we have revised our operating budget, which resulted in a reduction in the municipal budget this last year, this, this current year. We've lowered the budget, taking out things that were resulting in a large surplus for the town, trying to get a lower level of surplus, which I think is the right thing to do. That means we're not going to have as much in the way of reserves going forward to apply to the tax rate. So eventually, these increases are going to become true. It's just a matter of how quickly and how much of our reserves we tend to use. Any questions? Give me a moment. This, and I'll just jump to the bottom of this. This shows you that for that seven-oh-seven, seven dollars and seven cents that we're forecasting of this, the municipal budget would be the equivalent of two dollars and thirty-nine cents of that seven-oh-seven, and the school budget is four-point-four-oh-and-sixty-eight cents. And in this table, I described, if you've got a property valued at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the, the annual tax increase would be a hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. For a million-dollar property, it would be six-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, just to make a sense of what this means. Now, what's going on with our reserves? And, and by the way, when we're done tonight and we finalize the numbers, we will post this on the website, so people can take a look at it and be able to study it. For, you can see here, I just detailed out all the additions and deductions in reserves that took place. that took place in fiscal year '23, '24, and what we're anticipating for '25. My estimate of reserve balances at the end of June 30, 2025, almost 11 months from now, we will have $2.2 million in general fund reserves. We'll have $786,000 in school reserves, and so a total of three. Now, that reserve balance of 2.2 million for the town is, reflects an estimate for what we think the surplus will be when the final accounting comes out for the past year. We've already gotten an indication from the auditors, it's about 750,000. They haven't completed their work. We don't know exactly what that will be, but that's what we plugged in here. And the school has not yet done, I have not seen anything from the school, but based on their prior year trending, I've assumed another 300,000 surplus from the school. So that will leave us about $3,000 in reserves. Now, you recall, we have a surplus policy. And the surplus policy says that for the town, we should have, we should, we have a minimum and a maximum level of reserves that we want to maintain. We don't want it to go below the minimum or necessarily above the maximum, not without some reason. And those percentages are 16.7% of the expense budget at the low level and 33% of the expense budget at the high level. The school has, is guided by state policy. And the state policy says it should be within a range of 5 to 9%. So when you apply that, where I say the minimum level allowed by our policy for a municipal, it says that we should not go below $769,000 in reserves. And the policy high level is a million five. And the numbers below that tell you the extent to which if we do what, if everything in this model comes through, we, if we went above the minimum level, we'd have another million five above that minimum level that would be required by a policy, or $700,000 at the maximum level. And you can see what's going on with the school. They will have an extra $455,000 or $200,000. So for a total of a million nine at the lower level, then 900,000 at the higher level. I think I'm going to start there and ask the questions. What do you think of this?
Well, I think it works. Unfortunately, you know, you look at the progression of where that tax rate's going to go, it's going to be, that's where it's going to go. I mean, we can't tap into our reserves, wipe out our reserves for immediate fix. We go, we go project like Tom has done for the future. I like looking at what's in the bank as, it's there, it's our emergency fund, it's earning us a couple hundred grand a year, which is offsetting our taxes.
Right.
Okay, everybody seems to forget about that. If we start pulling from that, that's less we're making, less we're offsetting. It's our rainy day fund. But realistically, we did a pretty good job this year of getting our budget, our operating budget in with, you know, our departments set down where they needed to be. Because we did that, we're probably going to have a lot less surplus next year. So we're going to have to do this progression. If we don't do this progression, we're, they're going to call our pants down somewhere down the road. So I think it's a good idea. At first, I'm like, wow, can we pull some more money? Let's get it down below that $7 mark. And all that is, is just camouflage.
Psychological, yeah.
Yeah, it makes you feel warm and fuzzy, but you know, the next year after that, you're going to be done. You know, so.
Artificial.
I think what Tom has done here is, you know, the path that we have to be on. And nobody wants to see the taxes go on. But, but there's a way to make this work. You know, you're going to have typical 3%, 4% inflation or whatever, but we've got to look at our budget lines. Of course, we're just going to talk about spending 750,000 on a car, you know, but we've got to look at.
But we've got reserves if you wanted to do that.
Exactly.
That would be the appropriate way to function of stuff.
And that's it, you know, we had, we had that around what, 3 million, or you're just talking about most reserves. But you know, then, but then you've got to look at the operating costs. You know, if it's 350,000 a year, that's going to hit that. So, you know, unfortunately, this is where we have to go.
Yeah. I won't say unfortunately. Fortunately, for a couple of things, we get Tom on the board. Everything that he's told us so far, in all his budget works, is come to fruition.
Yeah.
It's, it's true. The school budget was up, what, 12% roughly? Our budget was down 3%. That pretty much puts you right at.
7%.
Puts you right at the number. Yeah. So, yeah, thank you, Tom, for doing all this. I mean, that's, that's a great way to see it and lay it out.
Well, I think really at the end of the day, seeing the years of what you're projecting down the road, that's a huge, huge thing for the taxpayer of acting. So, you know, they don't think that we're going to have, randomly just doing stuff.
And we don't, we don't know what the school's going to do in the, in the next two years. So there's no number plugged in there for that. They may or may not have.
You know, I've got a minimal number in there, but I was going to say, I, I think that's where we ought to focus, not on the school, sorry, but on the growth in the operating budget. I think we ought to set some targets for the town. And the school should set some targets. I don't personally, you know, as a taxpayer, I'm sitting on this side of the table now, I think we need to get those down to inflation plus 1% to 2%. That's where, you know, that, we just need to make it work. And if that means we need to cut some areas in order to make that work, I think we should do that. And I'd love to see that discussion at the school as well. Now, it would be great if we had a joint discussion. I don't know if that could be done, but it, something that would set the tone for the entire town prior to starting the budget. And we agree to some targets. And, and then we're all working towards a goal. Because those numbers at 3% and 4% and even the school sits, those are going to be hard to reach. Those are not going to be easy, though. Because we don't get contract pricing going up all the time, the cost of tar and, you know, road work is going up. It's going to require us to take a, have a look at our budget. And I think, I assume, given what's going on with salaries at the school, they're probably going to have a hard time reaching that as well. But I'm not sure how we have that discussion, but I'd like to see it take place in the town. So we don't just wait until April and the budgets are done and we're sort of look at the end result and say, oh gee, what do we do now? Whether we can afford it.
The $900,000 there we put forward to get down to the 707. Without that, that $900,000, what would it be, Tom?
I'll figure it out.
Probably what, 9?
I think it's 8 something.
8 something.
Let me.
Because I think that's one thing that the taxpayer really has to understand is.
Because the 782.
782, okay. The, without, every time we dump this money back in, we're artificially setting that rate. And if we start budgeting correctly, we're not going to have these surpluses. You know, that, that almost million dollars that we're not putting in will be there in a moment after boom. It's huge, fast.
It didn't jump as hard as I thought that way.
No, no.
It went up a lot, but it didn't hit the $8. Yeah, take the money out.
Oh, it was another 10 cents.
Yeah.
It went up 75 cents.
Right.
So, you know, it went up a little over, about 11%, 11%.
At the end of the day.
It's a pretty big increase.
We should be trying to budget to zero. You know, zero surplus. You know, I mean, it's great having a little bit, but when we, we're just artificially changing it every year. And if we budget zero, then aim for it. You're, you're going to aim for it, but you're never going to get it. You know, revenues will go up and everything else, but that's what we should be aiming for anyways.
I don't know what form we would use, but, and I know the school is independent and of course they have their own process and approval process. But I personally would like to see the town and the school get together and try to talk about what they see coming forward in the next year, what kind of increases that we're looking at. And begin to talk about, maybe we can afford them, maybe we can, maybe we can't afford them. And if we can't, what are we going to do as a town? Because in the final analysis, it's one budget. It all gets funded through taxes. And so breaking it up is, I asked him why it's done, but you know, if this was a business, you'd be looking at a single budget, a single budget, not two separate budgets that kind of go in different directions. Okay, so I think we're, if, I'm sorry, Chris Derrick.
Yeah.
Monica Joyce.
Thank you. Thanks.
I was just wanting to make sure Tom was getting through his.
I'm done.
Okay, great, okay.
But she was kicking me in my heel back.
Back there.
Okay, I better go on since I, because I can't talk for warrant from finance, but I have been a member of warrant from finance for, I don't know, four years now or something? I'm on my seventh term, whatever it is. And this type of budgeting or looking at what we're doing here, it's just what I would like to see, and that is if we can get the school, which my belief is, we have one, it's one budget in this town. It's, it's a department of the town. The school is a department of the town. It's one budget. But I think if we could put in the effort that has gone into getting the operating cost here down to a pretty doable amount of money, if we started with the school now, not waiting until April when the, you know, the budget is done, but start looking where we can cut it down where it's really needed. And the really, really why I feel that way is because there are so many changes right now going on at the school. There's new leadership there, a new principal, I believe it is. And, you know, when there's a change, there's always, always changes. And I would just suggest that, I don't want to dump any more on you, Tom, but if we could get the, the school to kind of jump on this kind of bad, bad line.
You know, I actually think, I actually think the school does a nice job in their budget process. Have you seen it now for the last couple of years? I think it's, it would just be useful to understand, have an earlier view of where those budgets are going to go. Because I think they do develop them in, you know, in segments. And you don't see the final results until the end. And so my way of doing budgets is you set goals at the beginning and you have a sense of what you need to do to achieve those, and then you go about filling that out rather than just filling it out and looking at the results and.
That's just it, just finding the results in April is maybe putting the cart before the horse.
Tom, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm just getting emails from a couple people. Can you move the podium up to that X and make sure you're talking by the vote? They're having trouble hearing you on the, the mics are on the ceiling, so if you're not standing there talking.
Well, I'm not going to repeat everything I said.
I was hoping they could rewatch it, they just don't want to miss the edit.
Tom said.
I, I think overall, Joyce.
That's what I wanted to say.
What he's weighed out here with the tax increase over the so many years.
Yes.
I think every department in town is going to, school, every department in town is going to have to start watching what they spend.
I think it's a very good beginning. And it would go, because, I mean, it might be unpopular to say, but I don't think a little over 7 is too bad of a tax rate.
Well, I mean, it's going to, just, it's pretty cheap compared to, you know, I know some towns with 22. So, but I mean, we, we still want to be realistic and we're trying our hardest. I appreciate it, Tom, you doing this.
Okay, so shall I make a motion?
I, we want to set it today or what's going on?
We want to set it today.
I'll make a motion that we set a tax rate for fiscal year 2025 at the rate of $7.07.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Do you want the entire document on display?
Let me trim it down.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight, as you know, W.G. Smith and I worked to get a grant for upgrading, A, adding AEDs so I can get one on every marked vehicle that we have, and a new one here at Town Hall, adding one at the transfer station, and with the grant funds, putting together one for the rec. So I'm here to ask permission to spend the grant money. I got, I don't have, I got the latest quote, but added something to it. I didn't get the updated one from him today, but we have grants for $15,000 specifically written for the AED purchases and upgrades. The quote I have here in front of me is just for five of them. I've added a sixth one, which brings us up, brings us up to $13,835.28. Through this grant, we have to get new wall mount for here, because that box isn't going to be big enough for the new style AED. One for the transfer station, the school that also budgeted for AED purchases for three additional ones down there. So through this grant, I'm buying the additional wall mounts that they need for down there, which brings us to $14,339.28. $660.72 left over, which I have to talk to sales rep, but my goal would be to buy as much as I can, probably two, maybe three sets of AED that's extra, where we use those on calls on a regular basis, to expend that 15 grand as soon as we can get to it.
So the grant's pretty much paying for all this?
Correct. The school is paying for their own AEDs, all they have to pay out of here is the wall mounts that they need for down there to mount them in the hoes.
And this is pretty much just like usual, you only got a couple companies you can really work with.
There's only one company I can get it from because of the fire department has sole monitors, and also is a sole supplier company, they're only the ones that deal it. So that gets, the one here, we talked about, Jennifer and I have talked about, I don't stock the parts for that, I don't stock the pads for that, because it's a totally different brand than what we have. So it's a special order every time. So now this will get everything up to everything we use. So I have to write stock. When these pads expire every two years, I just bring another setup and change them up. I don't like the special order.
What do you do with the old ones?
Uh, we're only going to have this one here.
Oh, it's the only one?
It's the only old one, so.
Rec department's taken care of?
I'm going to have one for the rec department, yes. And then we'll work out, I haven't worked out logistics, but obviously I don't want that left in the building down there, so.
Yeah.
Some sort of sign out, take possession. My goal is probably some sort of Pelican case, and then we'll throw, also throw some Band-Aids and some of that stuff. It'll, it'll be right there, but everybody will be trained on this stuff. They're pretty much all our anyways. Everybody at Town Hall is going to be trained. We've turned it back on with that.
I suspect they don't have much of a market value, that one that's going to be turned over. And is there some organization that we could donate it to?
Certainly, it's possible. I'm not going to just throw away by any means.
No, I'm sure you wouldn't, but perhaps there's an organization in the area that, you know, could benefit from this.
We can figure that out.
Because you're probably not going to get a lot for it if you sell it, but. Because you're probably not going to get a lot for it if you sell it, but.
No, I mean, the new ones, they're about, everything to put in service is about $2,300, and that's with our discounted price, ordering nine of these at once, so we're getting a decent, this price is, just for the AED itself, that mine batteries, pads, all that stuff, $2,900 bucks, and we're giving them for about $1900.
I mean, I, I guess the whole brighter list.
Yeah, oh yeah. Craig, you got the grant?
Yep.
Sounds like a good plan.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the fire chief to spend no more than the $15,000 based, based on his presentation tonight to replace the AEDs.
Yeah, the total, and I did work with the company to separate our invoice stuff, so school will get their own invoice for their things, they'll take care of the bill, and we'll get ours and give it to them.
We're here, second. All in favor?
Thank you. One other thing, just new today, I know I mentioned it when I brought up the grant for the Cassia, but I went to a meeting today at EMA, through work, again, our EMA director, which also is the fire chief, and myself, with the relationships we have been forming and being part of the county groups, incident management team, and some of the other ones, I have secured funding to purchase a small generator and do the electrical work with our town electrician for the tower site. It'll still require us to go up there and take it out of the building and put it on, but it'll be, yep, and it'll be there, so all you got to do is send somebody up there, pull it out, plug it in, start it. I finalized that today, so that invoice stuff will be going straight to the EMA, we won't even see it, so.
Gasoline or propane?
It's a gasoline one, it's just a, it's a small Honda one, enough to run, we're hoping that it's going to run everything up there, but it's going to at least run the repeaters, which is what I've been worried about. If I don't have power in the building, I ain't worried about that specifically, so.
And flash would have to go in there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Run the tower.
Yeah, exactly, so, it's again, I probably, I've anticipated about, probably about $5,000. By the time we're said done, that the EMA would ride that tower, we're responsible for it, quasi, as you guys know, we're working through some details with that, but because it benefits everybody, that's why EMA has helped us out a little bit. It doesn't create a permanent fix, but it bridges a gap, and I don't have to try to hunt down a generator or borrow from somebody else, because I don't have an extra one to put up there, so.
If you guys need an extra generator, I got like three of them.
Yeah.
So give me a call.
Yeah, no, we're good, I just, I just wanted to bring that up. It just happened today, I was at EMA meeting today for all the EMA directors, and I talked to the county EMA director and finally got an answer, and sent me out, and so.
Nice.
Very nice.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, personal policy.
So I had a conversation with Chief Ham, I want to say a couple of weeks ago, and during that conversation, the discussion, it came up to my attention that maybe we should consider looking into the town acting personnel policy to address some of the concerns that he had. And I know we talked as a board, I don't know if you're wanting, I know you shared with me about having some of those specifics, you know, where those concerns come from, kind of having written down so that we can kind of look more into them when we're looking at the policy.
So in your packets, there is a complete personal policy for you to review, I've already highlighted some changes that we need to make, but there's also something that we got from main municipals, employee health trust, they do offer an income protection plan that the employees can, can choose to sign up for, it'd be 100% to the employees by expense. And there's three different levels of coverage, 40% of salary, 55 or 70. It talks about the premium competition, so it's something we could offer to the employees if they so chose. We pulled that together with Dan's recommendation, so I'm happy to gather anything else.
Do you have to select a single plan, or can the employee choose from those three options?
Employee chooses.
Good.
So it's basically the annual salary, round with that to the next dollar, multiple times the percentage they want, times the fee divided by 12 to get your monthly premium.
So, I'm talking about changing, changing our personnel policy to, can we have Wayne come up and maybe give us an idea? Do you mind?
Sure.
Oh, you, you don't want to brought it up, so we kind of want an idea out of you exactly.
Yes.
We don't want to be chasing after them, we want to go into this one.
Yeah, absolutely. So through my, what I've been, this is two years almost, becoming very first in personnel policy, given the market and the, and the situations that we're in as a town, I think it's time that we truly take a look at our, all our benefits, right? Like, I could listen, PTO time, right? Our PTO is like super low compared to other places, and I'm not saying we got to jump to the moon, but it's just that, right? So it's that, it's longevity, yeah, there's longevity in here, but it's a paycheck bonus, a lot of places it's in your, built in your salary. I'm not saying we can't do that or whatever, or this is the wrong way, I just think we need to, we, I guess I quit, like I'm talking to Dan, we hire a firm, we have an engineering firm do this, we have an accounting firm do that, I think it's time that the town take a proactive approach to getting an outside opinion on our benefits package, on if it's good compared to market, or if we should make some changes. And it's not just fire department employees, right? I've had numerous conversations with town administrator with opening positions in her, her office, right? Like, this is a town problem, right? It's not, I don't want to say it's a problem yet, but I think there just needs to be some work put into that to stay up with the market.
Well, I mean, we, we've been trying with, with, in the Town Hall here, I think right now, what we're looking at for you is your department, and I think what we, what I think the board really needs to see is a list of what you, your concerns are, and, you know, we were, we're in a little five o'clock meeting, you know, talking about whatever.
Workshop.
What's that?
Workshop.
Workshop. All workshop doors wide open, you know? And, and obviously, you know, we understand your concerns, and we, we were talking about, you know, where, where you're pulling your help from, and you know, who we're competing, and we understand the competing as well, Sanford, Burbank, it's everywhere, right? You know, so for your, for your department, you know, we're, we're, we're at the Town Hall, but for your department, I like to have a list of what you believe we can upgrade and make right. And what we like to see is conversation packages from the area, you know, a 30 mile, 40 mile radius, you know, and see, see where we're going wrong here.
So that's, that's why I encourage you, I, I know it's a cost, right? Everything requires a cost, and that's why I think it's, there's firms that do this, I'm assuming, right? Because what I'm trying to do, right, is take my feelings, my personal opinion, all that stuff out of it. Same with Town Hall, same with you, whatever, right? Like, we, we have a third party here, compile the data, because I can compile the data, I do, I do it with pay rates every year, right? And then some are good, some are bad, and then I get told, hey, we're right where we need to be, right? Well, that depends on what you're comparing it to. So if you had a third party that.
Well, here we did our last paid rates, you know, we, we went through all, all the towns around the surrounding area, we were right there, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying that's.
But the compensation part of it, that's probably where we may be lacking.
When you add it to time.
That's all it, that's what I say.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, I'm sorry.
And it's not for me to personally sit here and say, these are bad, right? There's a lot of work and time that's gone into this document that I'm not trying to sit here and discredit. There's just, I think it's time we open up and see what's.
I think, I think we get it, Wayne.
Yeah.
And personally, I'm supportive of bringing in a firm. For me personally, it would be helpful to understand what your turnover rate is, because the extent to which you can demonstrate that you've got a high turnover rate, which means people are leaving for some reason, and you have a prolonged period of time with vacancies, those are two things that would indicate that there's a problem someplace. And so if you have some data on what the turnover rate is, and sort of the average time to hire, something like that, to go along with the study on benefits.
I like the turnover rate on all the fire departments.
Well, and, and. And I don't think there's so much turnover rate, right? Like, I'm really, I look at this.
That's what you're talking about, though. You're talking about people leaving.
Right, it's recruitment and retention.
Retentions, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not saying we're losing people yet, but I can tell you, if we continue on this track, I'm not, I'm just not losing speed based on conversations I've gone in my office, that people are looking elsewhere, because there are places that, right, it's no, it's no secret.
Well, everybody's looking for better, more money, better packages.
Correct, and that's all I'm asking for, right, is, is the town, and I know we just went over the tax rate and the money.
That was, that was set up that way, Wayne.
Yeah. Just so they come up after and say, you want more money?
And I, I just want to make sure we take a, a comprehensive look at what's going on in this document, and could we do better in order to recruit and retain, right? The last, the last hiring process, the two hiring processes I've been part of personally for full-time employees, we had six on the first one, and some of them weren't even qualified, and then the last go around for a full-time position, two people, one of which wasn't qualified, based on qualifications that we're asking for. So that to me, that tells me we have a problem by itself, just that one scenario. And then obviously having a conversation with other department heads, that same trend is happening, where it's hard, right? Where they come back like, yeah, it's great, I love the job, but I want $4.00 an hour. Well, can't give you $4.00 an hour, you know what I mean, right? Like, it's, so it's, or hey, I want more vacation time, right? The 83 hours that you give me my first year for sick and vacation time don't go very far when you use a 24-hour shift, right? It just, things.
I personally supportive of what you're asking for, but I want to also point out at Town Hall, you look at the number of people that come forward that apply for jobs, the rate of the turnover, and how many of those are qualified, it's very similar to what you were describing.
Correct.
You know, you end up with only one applicant, and it's, it's, it's nationwide.
That's why I'm looking, looking at this as a town thing, not a fire department thing. I'm just, it came up in our conversation the other day, because we were talking about a bunch of things, and I, and this is where, one of the areas that I, I feel we're struggling as a town.
But the reason why I said what I said, both word about your department, and I think we've done a pretty good job inside this, this building here with keeping people, giving them more money, you know, and making it a better work environment, okay? And so we just, we just want to make sure, I want to separate that.
Yeah, totally.
And, because I know.
Yeah, and this policy, I guess, reflects all town employees.
Yeah, I understand that.
I guess, right? So that's why I was looking at it more of a town thing, not just about the fire department. I wasn't trying to make this about the fire department.
Put the benefits together, what, how are we going to end this? You want him to put together a benefit ideas?
I think a list, like we talked about, was a list of kind of exactly, as Tom said, what you're looking at, like your concerns, like, so we kind of have an idea, and some comparables, and that way if we do decide to go to a firm, we can give them a direction of what we want them to look at.
Yeah, see, so that's, that's the struggle, right? This is the struggle when it comes to our pay, and it comes all this stuff. I can get you, I can get you a town, right? Everybody doesn't like, I know this because it's come up before, I talk a lot about Sanford because that's where I work full-time. Yes, we're not the city, but I know those benefits inside.
You want to make it easy?
We're not giving those benefits.
Write down what you, what you think you need to operate that department, what you need for benefits, what you think the costs are going to be, or how it's going to impact your budget, and then submit it to us, and we'll see if we can make that work. At the same time, when you do that, we got to also turn around and see what it's going to affect on the other side of the transfer station, roads, people in this building, because it affects everyone.
That's.
So, but what you do is worry about your department, you give us those numbers of your concerns, and then we'll see if we can implement it into our personnel policy.
Wayne, I, I think there's a practical reason for doing this, is we don't want to go for, let's say we go forward and hire an outside firm. We don't want to go forward and do that, and have the board sort of set a direction and a set of goals for them, and then find later that they're not in line with what you have in mind. We'd like to know what you have in mind first. You know, it, it doesn't need to be all that detail, but we need to know what areas you believe, given your experience in this field, needs to be addressed, and we'll make sure those get attended to if we do hire someone to do the work.
Sure.
We don't want to do it, and then find.
I just have all the time.
You missed the mark.
I guess where I'm struggling as, as the department head is to put an exact number on it. I could tell you the areas, I could, I could.
No, we don't have that.
No, I know, so I just, putting the numbers together, like, this, I guess, right? We talk about all the time, we compare it to other towns our size, but that's not all that we.
And we can't do that, we can't, and I, we did that with discussion, we said, right, we can't, we can't. We can't go over the field or whatever, you know, whatever, because what I, what I tried to explain was, you're not pulling, you know, people out of new field, and you're pulling them out of Wells, Sanford, Bennerford, that's where you're pulling people from, so that's what we have to be competitive with. And so all I want to do, all I, and I, you know, the money part, we always start throwing that around, but I just want to have a list of what you think we need to be to be competitive.
Where are we deficient?
Okay, because we don't need this discussion every year, right? We need.
This was back when we just saw a projected plan, right?
Well, that's why.
Perfect.
That's why.
That's what I want to do.
As a department head, you give us your complaints, and we'll see where we are. We just got a complaint, but your concern, I'm sorry, you don't.
What do you mean?
Your concern, and we, and we can roll with it if we want to go outside, if we feel we have to. Well, let's see your concerns, put it down with people, then we'll see whether or not we have to go out and get a second opinion on it.
All right.
Right?
Thank you, James.
Thank you for coming to the recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, uh, personal policy, access tax agreement between Acton and Chapley.
So I'm sure you all recall, the Motor Vehicle Audit on Tuesday, I think it went extremely well, we'll wait until we get something to write in, but I think it went very well. One of the things that she did recommend, because Joanne Rankin has been along with the clerk in Chapley, that we update the agreement that we have with Chapley, it's a paragraph, goes, address the Bureau of Motor Vehicles to whom it may concern. The municipalities of Acton and Chapley have entered into an agreement to collect excise tax for each other's town when unexpected circumstances happen, such as power outages, storms, or personal situations, and the clerks are unavailable. Excise money will be forwarded to the respective town as quickly as possible. This agreement is not to be used for general town office closures. So Chapley signed theirs last night, asking the board to sign it.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the letter as presented for this August 14, 2024, to the Motor Vehicle Department concerning, shall they call it mutual aid?
Excise tax.
Excise tax support between Acton and Chapley.
Second. All in favor? Oh, perfect.
Would anyone like a bomb?
It's out, it's out.
What is it?
You passed that talk.
Oh, this is. We got to share.
No, let's try catering.
We got to share the list.
Let's last.
That's the Boondock, right?
Oh, okay, oh, okay, I thought this was a whole round.
I'll say that for you.
Okay.
I got.
Okay, Boondocks Farm Catering Request.
So they're having a one-day wedding at the Blueberry Hill Farm. They've got their liability insurance, everything tied with the state, so really, as we've discussed in advance, it's just more of an informational.
Cool.
They paid the fee, all is well.
Okay. Exactly, wait a minute, this isn't for alcohol?
Yeah, it's a catering event, yes, a liquor license, one-day liquor license for the wedding thing.
So what's the D? Where's the? Oh, yeah. Uh, what is the name of it?
No, actually, there probably is.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for Boondocks Farms Catering Request for 831, 2024, Blueberry Hill Farm.
Second.
All in favor? Now we'll pull from it.
Okay.
Okay, yes. So it's right here, over here.
You should highlight this. No poll numbers on this town.
No, it doesn't seem to be.
That's fine.
What's it, a new poll or something?
Two, two polls.
Two polls?
Yes.
Two, two of them.
Hopper Road?
Yeah, it's Hopper and Sanford intersection. Are these permits or what are they called?
Poll, what are we, zip?
Poll permits. All right, we have a poll permit for two polls. Like to make a motion to approve permits for two polls located at the intersection of Hopper Road and San Pedro.
Second. All in favor? Yeah, it's probably a good idea. John, the summary there, I think we ought to post that on our website.
Yeah, obviously, why not?
Yeah, at least people know what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not.
Can you send it to me electronically, John? Send it to me electronically?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have it emailed over.
Review it, maybe a couple of.
I was just saying, some of the bottom stuff.
Yeah, we might take a couple of them, John.
That's just saying that your voice with.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Okay. I'll have it sent to you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, I got another public comment, any public comment?
I don't see anybody.
We got drugs.
Yeah, he doesn't. Guys are so lucky. About the police department looking into gathering information business. It's a lot of money to have a police department, I think we all know that. I was wondering, have we had, and Jennifer, thank you, once a month you read out the police logs? And in reading those police logs, it's either one town or the other. I frankly am interested in Acton, not Chapeli. And do we know what, what's our per capita crime rate here?
Yeah, so with those monthly reports, the select board get a list of all calls that are categorized by, you know, false alarms or speeding, so they get a breakdown of that as well. I'm happy to share with you.
Right, so, but that's not really the crimes per capita, that's the calls. And just looking things up across the board, no, I know that's what you get, so that's what you can report.
My guess is you can get that on the web.
You can.
You can probably find that for any town on the web.
You can, which, which I've done.
Yeah, okay.
And according to that, there have been three hundred crimes of, shall I say, of substantial.
Yeah, serious crime.
That, three hundred and sixty-five in a year, so.
One a day.
One a day. And a lot of those crimes are misdemeanors. A lot of those crimes are more serious, but we are very fortunate. We don't have high murder rates. We have, evidently, one of the things we have is property, people's property being. But do, do we have, or can we have a, something put together saying, this is where it lies? This is, we have, you know, such a high rate of property damage or we have such a high rate of, I hate, you know, battery, you know? People getting beaten and things like that because not wanting to say we don't need anything, but to be able to judge, is X amount of dollars to have this worth the benefit of what the crime, of what our crime rate is? Is that what the sheriff's department can keep control of?
And that's part of the, the problem that was brought up is that right now we're in doing one-year contracts and there's not even a promise that they're gonna be offering that service, which is why we, we're looking into this. Because we want to make sure that we can continue to keep people in Acton safe and we can continue to keep Acton a safe and great place to live. But they're asking that question if, you know, it's worth it is, I mean, we don't even know if the sheriff's is gonna keep offering a program that we're currently working around.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the, two years ago, when the sheriff's department polled their deputy for like four months, honestly, I don't think anybody even knew it, okay? But, but the problem is this choice is, okay, say, say, Bill King says, you know what, we're done, we're not doing anymore, what are our options? Well, we don't want to be behind the eight ball and say, okay, well, now we're gonna look, we want to start that now, and you're right. So say, and, and John Walton, and they find out it's gonna be eight hundred thousand dollars to start up and then a three hundred fifty thousand dollar a year operating budget. Well, at least we can put that to the tax base and say, is this what you want? And then they can justify it, but I do remember one thing, it was comical. I wouldn't say comical, everything's funny to me, but, so, remember when we voted in the sheriff in the first place?
Yup.
You remember that, school was packed, right? And we spent an hour and a half talking about whether or not we were voting twenty or forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, like twenty-two thousand dollars.
It was twenty thousand, if we went in with Chapeli, but we had to vote on forty in case Chapeli didn't do it, you remember that? So, and we talked about that for an hour and a half.
What else did we do that night?
And then we voted four hundred fifty thousand dollars, we talked for fifteen minutes. So, so, but, 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 but there was a lot of discussion over that. And then, then when you, when you give a service and then you take it away.
Take it away.
Yeah, so we want to make sure if that gets taken away, we have a backup plan.
I, I think the FBI, I don't have to go down to this level, but they post crime stats for cities in the US. So we, if you're interested in that, you may want to look at that source, because they are the official source for crime stats in the country.
Yeah, that, that I've done.
Okay, so what you're looking for is not in there?
Oh, oh, no, it's just that.
Cause you were asking that we find data and I'm wondering if it's already.
And have you looked at that data?
No.
Okay.
No, I haven't personally.
Yeah.
I saw one.
That's the boy on you, you know, has, in, in doing it, have any of you looked at the actual data, what it says and where we stand in? You know, if, if we are God's gift to a crime-free area, do we spend a million dollars?
But I don't.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, I'm being a drat.
Definitely, I think we're just trying to get ahead of it in case, in case we get the sheriff full. You know, maybe it's not this year or next year, but it'd be in five years, so if we can start.
And in five years, we all different, don't we?
If we can put a plan together now and in five years we find out we need it.
Although you walk, you drive through Beneford, Sanford, Rochester, it's not the same place as we drove through ten years ago. Okay, so, you know, I don't, I, I can't imagine the crime rate's gonna go down.
Sanford is the same place I drove through five years ago.
No, not five years ago.
There are a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week if I did my math right, and we get coverage for twenty hours. That to me says everything. It just, and I, I think it's more of a feel and I, and when I've talked to residents about it, the feeling is that we could use more police protection. And so the stats will be one thing, but all it takes is one incident, we haven't got the kind of coverage we want, and we're gonna wish that we had.
Yeah.
And we got a school in town and we need to make sure that we're properly safeguarding the school and that's a whole nother segment.
Well, remember they had that shooter there, running around or watching everything down and.
We had no one to rely on.
No, no, I mean, uh, you know, we got, you know, we, and I guess in the just, but we should be getting more twenty, cause you know, they got their regular patrol.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm sure we do, but it's not the coverage we.
No, exactly, and, uh, so we're just trying to get ahead of it. That's all.
That's it, thank you, thanks.
Joe, man, oh, okay, well, Virginia.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?